Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Today is March 27, 2023. This is a legislative session for the Salisbury City Council. And at this time, I will call the meeting to order. A couple of minor announcements before we start. In case of emergency, please calmly exit the room, make a right, and go down the stairs. If that area is blocked, make a left and go around the corner and go down those stairs. In the event that there is an emergency, please do not use the elevator. Another thing is if anybody at the end of the meeting would like to make a public comment, we have forms over on the table. Just fill them out with your name, address, and email address so that if we need to contact you about your issue, we can. And at this time, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice.
Providing us with our invocation this evening is Pastor David L. McLendon from St. James AME Zion Church of Salisbury. Pastor McLendon?
Let me say good evening to all. Let us bow our heads. Gracious and eternal God, our Father, as we gather beneath this divine canopy of heaven, as we come before you this evening, in our hearts we plan our course, but we pray that you will establish our steps. I pray that the leaders of our city will seek you for advice. Let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let us act based upon your wisdom. Please guide us, dear Lord. We place this meeting in your hands. We place our hearts and our minds in your hands so that you may direct us to do what is pleasing and right in your sight. For it is in the marvelous, massless, magnanimous name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ, and in his name we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we have some presentations. So I'll turn the floor over to Mayor Jack Heath.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's good to see the chambers filled tonight, and it's especially good because this is my favorite part of my job. I have a proclamation that I'd like to make tonight, and it has special meaning for a lot of people and a lot of people here. And also, I might add to my daughter who taught with Sam at Wy Middle. She spoke very highly of him, and she can't be here tonight, but she sends her best. Whereas Samuel Edward Everett was born on April 27, 1945, to his loving parents, the late Solomon C. Senior, and Anola E. Everett in Salisbury, Maryland, and entered eternal rest on Saturday, February 25, 2023. And whereas fondly known to many as Sam or Sammy, he attended Salisbury High School and earned his bachelor's and master's degrees from Maryland State College, now named the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. And whereas after one year of teaching at Chestertown Middle School, Sam moved back to Salisbury and began a 44-year teaching career at Wy Comico Middle School, where he was an amazing life science teacher and a beloved track and field and cross-country coach. And whereas Sam, also known as Mr. Wy Middle, loved his students and they loved him. And if you have asked him what he was most proud of in his career, he would probably have said it was the mentoring program he set up, where successful men mentored young male students through their love of basketball. And whereas not one to sit still, Sam kept busy volunteering for many years at the Salisbury Zoo and adding to his collection of bowling and track trophies. Fleet Feet earned many gold medals as a senior Olympian. And whereas Sam was a well-loved, mild-mannered man that shared his love for life, his energy, his time, his talent, and his resources with the youth of this community, and he was the epitome of kindness. And whereas, most of all, Sam was a wonderful family man who loved his wife Carolyn and twin daughters Stacy and Tracy, whom he adored. Now therefore, I, John R. Heath, acting mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim March 27 as Samuel Edward Everett Day.
Could you get it? Could you come up and accept this? Now, we are going to get a picture, so let me present this. This is the original one, so. Okay.
I'll take a few.
Let me turn around. There you go. Okay. If everyone here that is here, Tom or Sam, let's go up behind the president, and we'll get a picture of everybody.
I brought my little balls.
Move this out of here.
In front or in back? Let's take in the back.
He wants us behind. Behind where the flags are.
Get back there. Try to get in between the two flags.
Squeeze in tight. Squeeze in. Make sure you get seen.
We'll get everybody in.
Right here?
Yeah, come on. Yeah, there you go.
One more of you. Answer two rows. Short people. We have short people.
I don't know them either.
Y'all can put me in the front, huh? There we go.
Sorry?
I gotta get all the way up here. I don't want that.
Here you go. There you go.
You get it?
Yep.
All right.
Okay. Three, two, one. Smile. Got it.
My wife.
April, we'll prop you into the picture.
There you go. Photoshop.
If the family would listen for one second. April, do you have something you'd like to say? April is not feeling well, so she's home. April?
I can remember Mr. Everett when I was in school. I never went to Wy Middle or Wy Junior High, but I did kind of communicate and relate with him with his track. He and Leslie Wright, I mean, the track me stay, they used to have at Salisbury Middle. He was, I know the family. I know the Formans. I know Carolyn. I know them all, and I am so sorry for your loss, but he was a great man, and he deserved this honor, and if we could do more for him, we would. I appreciate you coming forward this evening, and keep him embedded in your heart as the community will. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of more great things tonight. I would ask Alfonso Henry to come up here, please. How are you, Alfonso? You ready?
Yeah.
Alfonso works for the city, and he's a maintenance employee, and I'd like to read this for everyone. This is a Mayor's Award for Valor to Alfonso Henry. For a demonstration of valor to the city of Salisbury. On February 23, 2023, while driving to a nearby wastewater lift station, WWTP maintenance employee Carlos Ortiz and Alfonso Henry came upon a motor vehicle rollover on Waverly Drive. Carlos and Alfonso immediately used their city utility truck to block traffic from the accident, using their emergency lights to notify other drivers to avoid crashed vehicles. They then checked on both drivers and made sure both vehicles and engines had been turned off. They stayed with the vehicle occupants and directed traffic until the Salisbury Fire and EMS arrived and secured the scene. Carlos and Alfonso's quick thinking and compassionate care in the midst of an emergency situation goes beyond their job description and is deserving of this Mayor's Award for Valor. Alfonso? Carlos, I mean, Carlos, come on up. You deserve to have it read as well. We don't do two-for-one, sir. This is a Mayor's Award for Valor to Carlos Ortiz. A demonstration of valor to the city of Salisbury on February 23, 2023, while driving to a nearby wastewater lift station, WWTP maintenance employee Carlos Ortiz and Alfonso Henry came upon a motor vehicle rollover on Waverly Drive. Carlos and Alfonso immediately used their city utility truck to block traffic from the accident, using their emergency lights to notify other drivers to avoid the crashed vehicles. They then checked on both drivers and made sure both vehicle engines had been turned off. They stayed with the vehicle occupants and directed traffic until Salisbury Fire and EMS arrived and secured the scene. Carlos and Alfonso's quick thinking and compassionate care in the midst of an emergency situation goes beyond their job descriptions and is deserving of this Mayor's Award for Valor. Alfonso? Carlos, I mean, Carlos, come on up. You deserve to have it read as well. We don't do two-for-one, sir. This is a Mayor's Award for Valor to Carlos Ortiz. A demonstration of valor to the city of Salisbury on February 23, 2023, while driving to a nearby wastewater lift station, WWTP maintenance employee Carlos Ortiz and Alfonso Henry came upon a motor vehicle rollover on Waverly Drive. Carlos and Alfonso immediately used their city utility truck to block traffic from the accident, using their emergency lights to notify other drivers to avoid crashed vehicles. They then checked on both drivers and made sure both vehicle engines had been turned off. They stayed with the vehicle occupants and directed traffic until Salisbury Fire and EMS arrived and secured the scene. Carlos and Alfonso's quick thinking and compassionate care in the midst of an emergency situation goes beyond their job descriptions and is deserving of this Mayor's Award for Valor. Thank you. Thank you. Just in case he sneaks out soon, I would like to recognize Connie Luftman's husband, Wy Comico County Director of Administration, Bunky Luftman, is here. Thank you, Bunky, for coming. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the February 13, 2023 closed session minutes, B, February 21, 2023 special meeting minutes number one, and number two, and February 21 work session minutes. And the following six appointments are for the term ending March 2026. Resolution number 3240 approving the appointment of Deshaun Dowdy to the Board of Appeals. Resolution number 3241 approving the appointment of Charvey Hutchins Carter to the Youth Development Advisory Committee. Resolution number 3242 approving the appointment of Dolores Neal to the Friends of Poplar Hill Avenue, or Poplar Hill Board of Directors, excuse me. Resolution number 3243 approving the reappointment of Brad Phillips to the Historic District Commission. Resolution number 3244 approving the reappointment of Linda Weiner to the Zoo Commission, and resolution number 3245 to approve the appointment of James Yamakawa to the Truth Committee.
Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, with the following individuals, if you are present, please stand. Deshaun Dowdy, Charvey Hutchins Carter, Dolores Neal, Brad Phillips, Linda Weiner, James Yamakawa. I want to thank you all for volunteering your time and service to the city of Salisbury. Volunteers for committees and commissions do a lot of important work in our community, and we appreciate your service, so thank you. As I always say, if there's anybody that's interested in serving on a committee or a commission, please go to the city's website, to the mayor's office section, and they have a list of any openings that are available. And even if there's not, you can still submit your resume, just in case an appointment comes up in the future. They will gladly put it in the queue and give you a call if there's an opening. So, moving on, all right? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3246.
Second.
Chair Kitzro.
Resolution number 3246, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement to establish a housing and homelessness non-endowed fund, whereas there is a need to secure additional funds to support the city of Salisbury's Housing and Homeless Services Division. In particular, additional funding is needed for the operations of Ann Street Village and associated homelessness services, whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, the foundation has agreed to establish and maintain a non-endowed fund in which charitable donations will be accepted for use by the Housing Community Development Department in addressing homelessness, whereas the funds so donated will be used to support the city of Salisbury's Housing and Homeless Services Division, whereas specific provisions regarding the administration of the fund are included in the funding agreement attached here too as exhibit one. Among other things, the funding agreement confirms the foundation's policies on distribution and management of the fund, and whereas by this resolution, the council hereby approves the funding agreement attached here too as exhibit one. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section one, that a donation fund be established and maintained through the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore Incorporated for the financial support of the city of Salisbury's Housing and Homeless Services Division. Section two, the mayor of the city of Salisbury is hereby authorized to execute the funding agreement attached here too and incorporated herein as exhibit one. Section three, it is the intention of the mayor and the council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution should be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section four, it is further the intention of the mayor and the council of the city of Salisbury that if in any section, paragraph subsection clause, or provision of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provisions, so adjudged, and all other provisions of this resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable, section five. The recitals set forth here above in exhibit one attached here too are incorporated into this section of the resolution, as if such recitals in exhibit one were specifically set forth at length in this section five. Thank you.
Andy, any questions or comments from the council?
None.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I think this is a great idea, and this takes a load really off the city, just hoping that people will contribute to this endowment.
And just so that, to be clear, so that everyone understands the difference between an endowed fund and a non-endowed fund. An endowed fund is typically placed into the stock market to hopefully grow the fund by way of investment. This fund will not be invested in the stock market. It's simply a place for people who want to donate. They can easily donate, and it's easier for us to access the money and not have to worry about, because I think some of those, you can only take money out so many times a year, so that's the main difference. So no further questions or comments. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of resolution number 3246, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2783 for second reading to set billboard license fee for FY 2023 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed.
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ordinance number 2783, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland to set a billboard license fee for the fiscal year 2023 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2783 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2783 for second reading to set billboard license fee for FY 2023 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2783 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2784 for second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2784, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to transfer from the general fund and appropriate funds for the government office building number one and number two project and the general capital project fund. Again, this is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments from the council?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2784 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2784 for first reading.
So moved.
Council president, you mean 2786?
2786, yeah.
Yes.
We just did 2784.
Sorry about that, mayor.
I just read what the, what's up there for me.
Right. Blame Kim. I see that is, yeah.
But I'm not smart enough to know that I read the same thing twice. Entertaining, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2786 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2786, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 23 general fund budget to appropriate funds for the fire department's vehicle repair account. Again, before you for second reading, there have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments from the council?
None.
All right. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2786 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2787 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2787, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 general fund budget to appropriate funds to purchase and customize police department vehicles with proper police equipment. Whereas the city of Salisbury maintains an account in its general fund in which it deposit monies awarded to the Salisbury Police Department through the Wy Comico County Narcotics Task Force, referred to as the equitable sharing funds. And whereas the SPD desires to utilize the equitable sharing funds to purchase and customize or outfit for SPD vehicles with proper police equipment, and whereas the, as, excuse me, whereas the enhanced SPD vehicles will be used in criminal investigations, patrol operations, and SPD recruitment and retention efforts. And whereas the enhancement of SPD vehicles also improves response time, communications by between officers, and the overall efficiency of the SPD. And whereas the SPD requests a transfer of $214,189.35 from the equitable sharing funds account into its vehicle purchase account. And whereas the SPD will apply any remaining funds to our future vehicle purchases and/or vehicle maintenance. Ordinance number 2787 reads as follows. Section one, the city of Salisbury Equitable Sharing Fund Budget B and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase the current surplus account, which is number 01000-469810 by $214,189.35. And B, increase the vehicle purchase account, account number 21021-577025 by that same amount, which is $214,189.35.
Any questions or comments from the council?
None.
All right. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2787 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2788 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2788, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland accepting the donation of a police canine or canine to the Salisbury Police Department. Whereas the Throwaway Dogs Project is an internationally recognized nonprofit organization that rehomes canines deemed unsuitable for their initial purpose by repurposing, retraining, and relocating them into police, fire, and veteran services. And whereas the Delmarva Canine, Inc. specializes in police dog training, and through its connections to the Throwaway Dog Project facilitates rehoming of such canines in the Delmarva region. And whereas, Delmarva Canine, Inc. wishes to donate a repurposed canine to the Salisbury Police Department. And whereas the donated canine at issue was initially purposed for bed bug detection, but was found unsuitable for service in that specific training environment. And whereas the canine has since been found suitable for police duty and has been successfully certified in police patrol functions. And whereas this trained and certified canine has a market value of approximately $6,000. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department desires to further train the canine to specialize in accelerant or bomb detection at a cost of $6,500. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department has the surplus funds available to cover these costs and has great need for this type of specialized canine, given the ever-increasing special events within the city of Salisbury and limited human resources. Ordinance number 2788 reads as follows. Section one, the aforementioned canine having a market value of $6,000 B and hereby is accepted from Delmarva Canine, Inc. And section two, that same canine is approved for further training and accelerant or bomb detection at a cost of $6,500.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Just a comment. I just think it's wonderful that we can do this. It's great, and I think I'm all about the dogs. I think it's good for the dog, too. This is a dog that's being given a purpose, a job, and, you know, I know he would be well cared for, so.
Ashley, do you think your dogs could be trained for this, too?
They've done it. They've done it. They've given out tickets, too, Bo, to be careful.
All right, I will. All right, at this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2788 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. All right, that's it for the business of the meeting. Next up is public comments. We have, thank you, Mr. Kitzro.
You're welcome.
We have Tina Brennan, who would like to make a comment. If you'd just up to the podium, please.
I just came to ask, I don't know exactly what the ordinance is about parking trailers and, on the street, and leaving them there for years and years and not moving them, and just, I mean, on a, I don't know. I'm a little nervous. I know it's going to be on TV.
Take a deep breath. It's okay. I mean, if you would like, if you feel more comfortable after the meeting, I don't, we got Ron Strickler's here. He's our head of our Housing Community Development.
Yeah, because I've got pictures, and I'm having really bad issues with this.
He would be the one to give that to, and then he can have people look into it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. At this time, any comments from the administration? Oh, I'm sorry, James?
I apologize. I didn't realize we had to sign it. James Yamakawa, Wy Comico Truth and Reconciliation Initiative, also apparently the brand-new member of the Salisbury Truth Advisory Committee. So I guess this is my first official act as part of that as well. A few weeks back... A few weeks back, former Administrator Julia Glanz emailed me and asked that my organization partner with the city to tell the history of the firehouse that the city is moving its operations into. Kind of like, you know, wondering what kind of prompted that, I realized, then she sent the press release explaining that. I then consulted with some colleagues and advisors, as well as members of the Executive Committee, the Wycomico and NAACP, and we then held a meeting and decided to contact together the city communications team, which Julia Glanz had passed on this partnership to. During that meeting, well, I guess the first couple things should come first, the history of the firehouse, I'm not going to go into all of it, but the fact is, it does have a long history. We have the man who was basically building that firehouse, Chief Frederick Greer Jr., name's probably very well-known among circles in departments, I think he was the first person to be able to, like, fully drive a motorized truck, did a lot of things. His family was very, very important. He was also a member of the mob that lynched Matthew Williams. When the mob came up to the firehouse, on their way from the hospital to the courthouse, which is just outside this door, they stopped and asked for a rope, and he gladly gave it to them. So, that is why the city wanted to partner with us to tell this history. It kind of should have asked a lot more people first, and that's why I asked the NAACP to join in on this meeting. The fact is, you can't stop the city from moving into that building, but the city needs to really kind of own up to that. So, in that meeting, we came up with four, hesitate to call them demands, suggestions, requests, ideas. One, that there be full assurance from the City of Salisbury that former Fire Chief Frederick Greer Jr. is not honored in any way, shape, or form when the city moves into the firehouse, whether through naming of the building or in any other fashion. Two, that the City of Salisbury ensures their full cooperation, including financial resources, in support of the new Truth Advisory Committee, the committee which languished in limbo for a year after being announced, after the city said, "Okay, you guys find people for it", and we tried, and we could not get anyone to respond. Then the city said they were going to, and they did nothing. Finally, right around election time, it became an issue. So, it's now happening, that's good. That all records that are in city possession and that hold pertinent information regarding the lynching of Matthew Williams, or the dismantling of the Georgetown or Cuban neighborhoods, are to be made available to the Truth Committee and to partnering organizations. And finally, that the City of Salisbury, the Salisbury Fire Department, and the Salisbury Police Department make a public apology acknowledging the institutional legacy of this racial violence and their historical role in it. Chief Frederick Greer was not the only city official involved. Police Chief Nicholas Holland, the former Mayor Kennerly was also involved. The fact is that this could not have happened without the complicity and the, in some cases, actual participation of officials in power. So if the city wants to move into this firehouse, they need to start thinking about what that actually means. It doesn't mean they shouldn't, it just means you got to actually put your money where your mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Any other public comments?
I haven't signed either. Do I have to go here?
I just have a couple of questions, and maybe I just missed it. Good evening. Could you expound briefly on what the building number one and number two are in the general fund, where the funds will be transferred? And can you give some idea of what that amount is that will be transferred?
We had, initially, there were, there was a large project out at where Public Works is, the goal was to build some new buildings out there for expansion of city services. The, what we ran into from the time that we planned it to when we began to execute and procure costs for construction of a new building doubled or tripled, and it became obvious that that was not financially responsible alternative at that point to come back, and instead of where we had budgeted two to three million dollars, it was going to cost us seven to eight to do that. So, we had to regroup and find a way to reorganize, and that's, this is the solution that we came up with.
Does that include both number one and number two?
Yes, yes.
Do you know what projects would be forsaken in order to transfer those funds?
It, that was, that was the project, that was the project.
No particular project will go undone in order to regroup?
It's just, it wasn't affordable for us to do that, and so once the mayor's office and the suite up here moves out, another department will move in so that they can have the room to do what they need to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comments, questions? All right, if not, I will turn this over to, for administration...
Demetria, did you?
I have a...
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to be... And this is Don't Ask. I thank everybody for coming out for Mr. Everett, and one of special thanks to his daughter, and, I don't know, Ms. Fay, she drove from Virginia, what part? Hampton, Virginia, to be here, so I just want to just say that. Thank you, guys, thanks to the city. I'm going.
Thank you for driving us from Virginia, unfortunately, we don't have a...
A prize for the person who traveled a long distance tonight, but...
I think that's something we need to consider. We need to start making competitions, how many people we can get here to...
I drove from Easton to get here today, from work, but...
Well, we shouldn't be eligible for that.
All right, we will, at this time, I'll turn it over to administration for comments.
Thank you. First, I'm going to second what Angela's going to say, but not mention it now.
Okay.
Next, this Saturday is the Salisbury Marathon, please come out and cheer on your favorite marathoner. I am not running. I will be standing there at the start line and the finish line to wish everybody well. Next item, just to make you aware, keep something down, coming up down the road, eight years ago, we met at, and some of you were there, we met at Salisbury University for several days, talking about and listening to what the public and leaders in the community had to say about where we should go in the future, and the results of what you see downtown right now, and the surrounding areas, was chosen to be done by the citizens, and that was, that was our master plan. It's been eight years since we've done that, and I think it's time to evaluate and take a look at where we said we were going to go, where we are now, and should we make some changes and tack a little bit to see if we can perform better as an organization. So, we are planning, no date, no specific date is picked, but we're looking at a September timeframe to have the same kind of group and commitment from all the citizens to help us decide where the next eight years or nine years will go. And we will keep everybody informed, Casey and her team, Casey and Allison will make sure that everyone knows what's going on and where the date. I've already talked to the university, they are going to allow us to use part of the university again for this, and also I spoke with, for those of you who know her, Michelle Ennis, who was the coordinator and sort of kept everybody in line at the, at the training and the meeting, she will do it again for us. So she is very well-versed in the master plan. And lastly, it's good news and bad news. The good news is that we had scheduled Ann Street Village for April the 14th for the ribbon cutting. That is our, for those of you who don't know or from out in Virginia, we have 24 tiny homes that we are built, that we have built and are ready to be occupied by 24 homeless people, and there will be wraparound services for those people in transition, this is a transition housing, it's not permanent housing, and when we get them stable, we hope that they move through, have a job, and are living in an apartment someplace on their own, and then we will go forward and put the next group in as they, as they are successful. That has been changed now to April 25th, 21st, and the reason it's been changed to April 21st is the Secretary of Housing Development, our former mayor Jake Day, is, on the 14th is at reserve duty, Army Reserve Duty, so he can't be here, and to be honest, we still need more money from the housing and state housing, so I'm going to make him happy. And to be honest, it was, it was his idea to push this forward, so that will, that will be happening. On a side note, we had 24 units, as I said, the initial signup was for 51, and everybody, I think, will agree in this room that if 51 have signed up, there's probably another 100 or 125 individuals that haven't signed up yet, and what are we going to do? And we're going to figure out something, what are we going to do to help those people? Because this is not the end of the story, this is just going to be a continuation, and we're going to have to figure out something. So, thank you for the time, Mr. President, appreciate it.
At this time, I will go to Councilwoman Jackson.
Sorry I couldn't be there today, but I had a little food poisoning, so been under the weather for the weekend, but what I would like to say, on Wednesday, March the 29th, is Vietnam Veterans Day. The VFW Post 10159 will be hosting a celebration for the Vietnam veterans, so you're all welcome to come, even if you're not a Vietnam veteran, just come. And also, our speaker of that evening will be our former mayor, who is the Secretary of Housing and Community, and we'll have another guest there, we're not sure for, right now, but we would love to have you come out and celebrate, because these men fought, not only the Vietnam veterans, but the veterans, period, have fought, they've kept us safe, and we need to salute them in every form or fashion that we can. And I'm behind the 100%, especially the veterans, I really am. And also, on April the 8th, my organization, Salisbury Advisory Council on Youth Activities, will be hosting an Easter egg hunt in the Waterside Park, it's from 2:00 to 4:00, so please bring your children out, families, whatever, please come out and help the kids and the families celebrate Easter. Again, sorry I'm not there, but I will be back next week, thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, April. Mrs. Gregory?
Well, I just want to remind folks, please go get your COVID booster if you haven't already, it's incredibly important, especially as we're getting back to getting together and coming out of the winter funk, and going places, and, you know, that sort of thing, if you're going to DC to see the cherry blossoms or something like that, you know, make sure you get your COVID booster, because that's, we want to make sure that all of our folks are safe. And that should be about it for me.
Ms. Blake?
A couple of questions, on the 21st for the Ann Street Village, what time is that ribbon cutting?
It is 11 o'clock, and all the great details and activities are going to be forthcoming from our Communications Division, so...
All right, I just wanted to...
Could I ask a question? Andy, now, let me, I really need to say, why would it be at 11 o'clock when, I know, I know what you probably want to say, but, you know, it would probably be a lot of people that would want to be there if it were at, the 21st is on what?
Friday.
Friday.
It's on a Friday, yeah. And when you have it like 11 o'clock, that kind of puts a damper on people who really would like to attend, because a lot of people work.
April, we are following off the secretary's calendar and availability for it being at that time, and just for some other reasons, but we'll take that in advisement, we'll let everybody know, the official time right now is scheduled for 11, but we'll talk to our team internally, but you'll get, the date's not changing, but we'll, as of now, it's 11, we'll see if there's anything that can be done, we'll let you all know if something changes.
And just two more things, I just want to reiterate and thank again our city employees for their acts of valor, but I tell you, we have really good city employees, great, outstanding city employees, who work hard every day to keep us running and smooth, and enhance our city and our well-being, and I just want to just give another shout-out to all of our city employees. And as always, if you're healthy enough, please, please donate blood, we're in critical mass, it doesn't take long, if you're healthy enough, one pint could save up to three lives, so donate blood.
We talk about that every, every week, and I'm kind of wondering if we should do a blood drive.
Actually, I think one was scheduled at one point, wasn't it, earlier in the fall?
There's one in April for city employees.
Oh, yeah, what date is that?
Uh, 25, I think.
Oh.
With that, I don't really have any comments, because I think everybody said it, so ditto everything, what everybody said. Thank you all for attending tonight and staying, usually nobody stays for meetings, and it gets lonely, so we are adjourned, thank you.